How did you meet with the council, Roger? Did you, did you meet with the council? How did it go?
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Carver Laro.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
All present, except for Second Ward, Sixth Ward, Your Honor, and Ossolet City Attorney.
Thank you. First, I would like to welcome our First Ward Alderman back. It's been a long time, and I'm glad to see that you were able to make it.
Well, thank you very much. It's great to be back.
First item.
Before I read this, Your Honor, I'd just like to say that this is a resolution of respect for a man named Ralph Abbott. And Mr. Abbott, if it wasn't for him, we would not have had a Kiwanis. And since then, we not only have Kiwanis, we also have, for the first time in the city of Fulton, which is something I've always wanted to see come here, is a Little League. So the city of Fulton now has a Little League. And none of this would be possible if it wasn't for men like Mr. Abbott. Whereas Ralph Abbott passed from this life on January 24, 2003, whereas Mr. Abbott, born and raised in the city of Fulton, received his bachelor's and master's degrees in physical education from Syracuse University. Whereas he served in the Navy in the late 1940s and early 1950s, and after an honorable discharge, began teaching in Sunsquam Elementary School in Melville, New York in 1958. He married fellow physical education teacher and the girl of his dreams, Ethel McGuire. Whereas when Mr. when Mr. Abbott retired after decades of teaching physical education to children in Melville, the cheerful, popular athlete barely slowed down. He bowled, played softball, volunteered with Habitat for Humanity, enlisting area teenagers to help build homes for charity. He led large youth groups on skiing and river rafting trips, and each week, he faithfully pushed a mower through the expansive lawns of the Centerport United Methodist Church. And whereas Mr. Abbott was very instrumental in getting Fulton's Kid Haven started every summer, he and his family would come from Long Island in support of Kiwanis and the Old Timers Ball Club. His dedication helped keep both of these clubs going. And whereas Ralph Abbott was a real people person, and the epitome of the word "teacher," he was loved and respected by all who knew him, and loved and respected all in return. And whereas Ralph Abbott is survived by his wife, Ethel McGuire Abbott, his daughter Carolyn Bell of Ithaca, three sons Gary of Colorado Springs, Colorado, James of Summit, New Jersey, Kenneth of Centerport, and nine grandchildren. And whereas the mayor and members of this common council, along with all of Ralph's friends in the greater Fulton area, will miss this fine man who touched so many lives, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of this common council share a great sense of loss with the family of the late Ralph Abbott, and do with deepest regret take official notice of the loss of this very special man. Be it further resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official records of this common council meeting of March 18, 2003, and copies of it transmitted to the immediate family, the late Ralph Abbott.
Motion. I'd like to take the privilege to introduce that as a motion, Mayor. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Your Honor, we have, I believe, Mr. Abbott's daughter, who came all the way from Ithaca, Carolyn Bell, and I do have these resolutions for you and your family.
Ms. Bell, is there anything you would like to say on behalf of your family?
Well, home is where your heart is. My dad was born and raised here. We spent a lot of time on Mar-a-Lago. I know that a lot of his heart was here. This would make him happy, and it really is one of those.
And his dedication to this community really showed that this is where his heart is. Next item.
Whereas the common council authorized Blaisenbalk and Lee, engineers and scientists, to conduct a comprehensive water rate study for the city of Fulton, whereas this comprehensive study has been presented to the mayor and the common council for their approval, therefore be it resolved that the common council hereby approves the water rate study presented by Blaisenbalk and Lee in its entirety.
We have a representative from BB&L to present this formally to us at this time.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Briefly, again, like I mentioned, I'd like to touch upon the purposes of the study and specifically the key issues addressed. First of all, it's important to understand that the city of Fulton's water department is operated on a cash needs basis. That is, all costs that the department incurs in providing water services service to its customers. customers are to be fully recovered through the sale of water to those customers. Simply put, the Water Department does not receive subsidies or outside funding to help recover its costs, and therefore it must do so through water sales. Uh, in recent years, the revenues have been and will continue to be impacted by declines in water sales. Of particular note is the, uh, is in regards to the city's two largest water users, that being the Nestle Foods, which has a pending closure, as we all know, and then the reduction of water use by Coastal Technologies Inc. Further complicating the matter regarding the, uh, decrease in revenues is the fact that contention's been raised, uh, by Coastal Technologies Inc. regarding the fairness and equity of the current water rate schedule. So therefore, the objective of this study was to evaluate and update as appropriate per industry guidance the city's water rate schedule in order to more completely recover incurred costs from all water users in a manner that's fair and equitable relative to the level of service provided to each customer. Uh, very briefly, the city's current water rate schedule is based upon a series of rates per thousand gallons. Uh, the city has a little over 4,300 inside-city accounts, and those inside-city accounts are providing water at $1.69 per thousand gallons. The city of Fulton also provides water service to, uh, 480 accounts outside of the city in the towns of Granby and Valney. Uh, those rates are, uh, those customers are charged rates of $2.95 per thousand gallons or $2.11 per thousand gallons. Those rates represent, the first rate represents a 75 percent adder, and that's for areas in those towns where the city actually provides maintenance of the water distribution lines, and therefore a 75 percent surcharge is, is provided. Uh, for the areas where they're charged $2.11, the towns actually maintain the li, the water mains, uh, lines themselves, and therefore only a 25 percent surcharge is added for those outside-city customers. For, for users that use very low water, have very low water consumption, specifically less than 5,000 gallons per quarter of a year or three months, the city charges a minimum charge, and that for the city customers is $8.45, and then for the outside-town customers, $14.75 or $10.55, again reflecting the 75 percent or 25 percent adder for outside-city customers. The Water Department, as I mentioned, it must recover all costs incurred, and therefore those costs incurred are essentially create the revenue requirements that they must recover from metered water sales. Uh, now, the city does, uh, the Water Department does collect some minor revenues from sources such as interest and penalties on late payments, water connections, fees, and various other little small charges. But in general, so what's left after those were subtracted are the costs for the Water Department. For the year 2003, those revenue requirements are just a little bit over $1.4 million. As part of this study, we also wanted to look at forthcoming years, and to do so, we have projected the years 2004 and 2005 revenue requirements. We did so by assuming a zero percent increase, increase on debt-related costs, that is principal and interest on past capital expenditures and construction projects. We also included a two-and-a-half percent increase annually for operating costs, labor, power, materials, and supplies. And as you can see, the three-year average is $1,435,615. And that's the three-year average of what the revenue requirements are for the city of Fulton's Water Department to operate, recover all costs without subsidy from any outside sources. So with that, it's important to know what the city will be selling in term, or anticipates, uh, having for metered water sales in the forthcoming years. To do this, we took a look at all the 2002 metered water data, and we were able to project that the city would sell, um, fi, a little bit over 558 million gallons of water per year. That's assuming that Nestle Foods would continue to operate. As we know, with the pending closure of Nestle Foods, uh, the reduction of that facility will be significantly reduced, and therefore we project after the closure of Nestle's that the, uh, the city would sell 4,000, 4,074,000 gallon, uh, 474 million gallons of water per year. That represents a 15 percent decrease. In other words, Nestle Foods accounts for 15 percent of past water sales for the city. Now, if you take a look at those values and you add in the $1.69 per thousand gallons, uh, either, under either scenario, the, uh, water cell revenues would be less than $1 million. And as you recall, the revenue requirement's on 1.4, just a little bit over 1.4 million. So therefore, it, it, it was important to take a look at and to develop an updated, uh, water rate schedule. To do so, as you recall, it was our goal is to be, develop a schedule that was fair and equitable and was as per industry guidance. In the public water, uh, industry, uh, they, really the guidance in terms of standards is the American Water Works Association. And they have a particular guidance called the Back to Basics Guide to Setting Water Rates that's really aimed at smaller public water utilities and insisting on setting forth a ci, a fair and equitable water rate structure. Under the guidance, uh, the AWWA notes that there's really two types of costs that the city Water Department must recover. The first type of cost are, are fixed costs. These generally include all of the debt-related principal and interest and a small portion of the operating cost. These are the costs that the city incurs in just owning and having a water system that's capable of eating, meeting each customer's peak demand at any time, 365 days a year. Now, there's a second category of cost also that are generally variable. These are costs that, to the city, that go up based on how much water the city sells to its customers. These generally include things like materials and supplies, and particularly pumping power. Uh, is, in other words, as the city sells more water, these costs go up to the city. Based on AWWA guidance, uh, BB&L is recommending a two-part water rate schedule. The first part is the demand charge, and the purpose of the demand charge is to recover that first category cost, the fixed cost. And from, uh, pre-AWWA guidance, the recommendation is to recover those based on meter size. And the reason meter size is used is that represents each customer's potential peak demand. In other words, a particular meter's ability to provide water at a certain peak rate placed upon the system by each customer. It also includes the cost of fire protection. Under the proposed, uh, water rate schedule, the base demand charge for a 5-eighths inch meter, which is the smallest sized meter that's typically associated with a single-family residential home, will be 26, 25 per quarter for city customers, uh, and either 45, 94 per quarter or 20, or 32, 81 per quarter for outside-town customers, again based on the 75 percent or 25 percent surcharge. Now, if the demand charges for customers that have meters that are larger than 5-eighths would simply be the base demand charge for the 5-inch meter multiplied by the ratio of the larger meter's capacity to that of the 5-inch meter. Uh, for example, if a larger customer had a meter that was capable of providing three times that of a 5-inch meter, his base demand charge would be three times 26, 25 per quarter. It's also important to note that the demand charge would really equate to the new minimum charge for customers, and this is a base charge, essentially. The, uh, second part of the wa, water, proposed water rate schedule is the usage charge. And as you recall, the second set of, of series of costs or category of costs were variable cost. These costs would be recovered under the usage charge based on annual, actual metered water consumption. And the base usage charge for the years 2003 to 2005 would be $1.81 per thousand gallons for city customers, and then with a 75 percent or 25 percent surcharge for outside-town customers, $3.17 or $2.26 per thousand gallons. The total water bill for a customer would essentially equal the demand charge plus the usage charge. Now, that leads to the simple question is why go through the difficulty of breaking those costs into two separate categories? Why not have just a single updated water use rate, uh, similar to what's now, but say $3 per thousand gallon based upon the revenue requirements and then the projected water sales? Now, first of all, it doesn't, a single rate like that wouldn't fairly recover costs associated with, um, users who may use a high demand out of very few or select, short period of time per year, and then sit idle for the rest of the year. While meanwhile, the city's incurring the cost associated with providing a water system that's capable of meeting that complete demand at any time. Uh, second of all, it really could deter a high water use industry from considering locating into Fulton. Um, it'd be, simply put, if you have a particular industrial user that would consider using multiple millions of gallons of water per year, it's certainly much more attractive for that user to, um, have a rate of $1.81 per thousand gallons plus a sm, relatively smaller demand charge rather than a peak or a large charge of $3 per thousand gallons. So that's really the reason. It's based on a fairness and equitable basis, and that's why the charge, it makes sense to split into two separate charges. Now, doing so, we, we also give as part of the water rate study an affordability review. We base this upon the typical, uh, city residential customer. Uh, the tipi, typically, uh, the Water Department reports that the typical person within the city of Fulton consumes about, on average, 70 gallons per person per day. And assuming, uh, a number of 2.5 persons per household, which is, uh, an approximation based upon the most recent census data, that equates to roughly 70,000 gallons per year per household. The annual water bill for that particular, uh, typical residential customer would be And again, that's based on two parts, the demand charge of $105 per year, which is the 26, 25 per quarter times four, plus a usage charge based on $1.81 per thousand gallons, which equals $126.70. Now, what does mean in terms of affordability? Under the, under this proposed, uh, recommended water rate schedule, a typical residential customer's annual water bill will increase by approximately 31 cents per day over the current previous water rate schedule. Uh, the typical residential customer's bill, uh, annual water bill, you know, under the proposed rate schedule would also equate to just a little bit under $20 per month. Uh, as part of the affordability review, we also wanted to take a look at, we conducted a survey of other, eight other peer cities to determine what they were doing in terms of water rate schedules and how they could, this proposed water rate schedule would compare. We looked at eight, uh, upstate New York cities, then the cities being Syracuse, Alita, Rome, Portland, Idlesburg, Almyra, Lowerwich, and Ithaca. Uh, the annual water bills for the typi, typical city of Fulton residential customer, again using 70,000 gallons per year, would be approximately 4 percent higher than the average of those eight other peer cities for the same type of customer using the same amount of water. However, if we do actually take out, as you know, the city's circus is, is significantly larger than the rest of the peer cities, eliminating the city's circus from that group and just looking at the average water rates for that customer in the seven other cities, the city's circus proposed water rate would be just a little under, s, 1 percent less than those, the average of those other eight, seven cities. It's also important to know, of those cities, uh, most of them do use a, a higher single rate, you know, over, you know, around $2 to $3 per thousand gallons. Uh, the city of Idlesburg and city of Auburn are currently using the, uh, two-part demand charge or base charge and usage charge, uh, formula, and it's really found to be fair and equitable, especially when it pertains to highly variable users and the cost the cities incur in providing best service. I'd also like to note too, that the peer cities were really selected, um, some of the thought that went into selecting those was to make sure that the cities had straightforward water rates that didn't receive subsidies from outside sources, and that there was also no particular large user or, or other circumstance that kind of set that apart. In other words, we tried to be as comparable as possible to the city's cash needs approach to its Water Department. With those findings at this point, uh, to help the city Water Department operate in a sound financial manner and continue to provide outstanding water service to its customers, we have a series of recommendations. Uh, first, we recommend that the city implement the updated water rate schedule, including the demand and usage charges. Uh, we also recommend, as the city goes forth, that they update and review a minimum of every three years, the base unit demand charge, again, $26, $25 per quarter for a 5-eighths inch meter within the city, and the base unit usage charge, $1.81 per thousand gallons get, uh, meter, metered water consumption for a city customer. We also recommend that the city continue to apply the surcharges of 75 percent or 25 percent to outside-town customers, uh, based on comparison to other cities and the fairness and equity of providing service to those outside-city customers. And we also have one additional recommendation that the city, uh, consider revising the city code so that the fees for meter, uh, installation and water service connection and meter removal and water service disconnection be able to run and two times respectively the annual demand charge for a particular customer. The purpose of this is really to make sure that a large user who the city's responsible for meeting their peak demand doesn't have the opportunity to remove a meter, or doesn't have an incentive to remove the meter, to avoid their demand charge obligation and unfairly pass those costs on to the rest of the city's customers. Thank you. I, would you like to open for questions? Yes.
Any questions?
Yes.
Do, the tables you presented us, figure five-one, figure five-five, do we have additional topics about?
Yes.
Can we please give those out? Because you'd have a lot of information, and now we need to, like, just, uh, go after, you need to see what the driver's heading on now, and then we go back and answer questions. First thing that comes to mind, honey, uh, would be the, uh, question that I would want to ask obviously is, what does this do to our waste treatment? Waste treatment charge is based on usage. It is not a percentage of your water truck. But this new fee will not affect your waste treatment. No, is that correct, Mark?
That's correct. This is independent of sewer-related charges.
That needs to be made known upfront, that that will not be affected.
One possibility to the water bill?
You want waste treatment first? Waste treatment is not going to be affected at all. Twenty-six.
No, $20 a month more, and, um, after you show that thing with all the peer cities.
There would be one second, like, fast forward here.
Right there.
Yes. This is for a typical residential customer that uses 70,000 gallons per year. That's based on 2.5 persons per household, and each person using about 70 gallons per day, plus a little bit for car washing and that sort of thing. It's a, it's a rounded number. Their annual water bill would, would be $231.70 per year, and that's based on $105 demand charge, the 26, 25 times four, plus $126.70 usage charge. So that leads to $2, or $231.70, right?
No, 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 that would be the new bill.
That's the total bill under the proposed water rate schedule. That's correct. Water usage, yes.
That Fulton Progeneration Plant, I use a crop grow for that, and I know they use a lot of, of water. Now, I don't know if that's going to still keep running after Nestle shuts down or not. Are they going to be responsible for all this, uh, extra big usage too?
Uh, under the proposed water rate, they would, they would pay a demand charge that would be equal to 26, 25 times the ratio of their meter size. Obviously, they have a large size meter, so if, for example, let's say their meter has 20 times the capacity of a single residential user, they're going to re, be, uh, has twenty times the capacity of a single residential user, they're going to be required to pay a demand charge of twenty times twenty-six, twenty-five per quarter, or twenty times a hundred and five dollars a year. Yep, as long as they have their service, that's what they would pay.
They have said publicly that they intend to stay operating. That was in the press. I don't know who they are going to supply steam to or power, but they've said they intend to stay.
I think it's important to note, too, under the current water rate schedule, if the Kogen plant was to stop, or any other user was to stop operations today and not use a drop of water, consume any water for the year, their total water bill would be the eight dollars and forty-five cents times four, or I think that's thirty-three dollars and eighty cents per year, which I think we all agree is pretty small relative to the city's cost in providing a system that not only can meet their peak demand, when and anytime they wanted it, but also provides fire protection to their facility, and whether it be hydrants or sprinklers. Again, the purpose of the breaking the charge down and separating the demand charge is really to be fair and equitable, and make sure the city is fairly compensated for the fixed costs that are there of just having the system in place and ready to go for any user.
Money into the water place, we're losing money in the water business, or what?
We're losing Nestle, and some, we're losing Kogen. The mayor's intent to continue operating, but to our capacity, we don't know. And there's also, Mark alludes to in slide two, intention in expression here, fairness next to our first water rate schedule, Lawson Penn, we get that. So we've got Nestle, and we've got Lawson Penn. We need to look at our whole water grid, water grids, and then probably our property and all the water. Yes, we all have to make up the Nestle, the lack of, but there's also a need to find a way in which we could structure this, so that it was fair and equitable.
When the Kogen first was built, they had never provided power to Nestle, they only provided steam. They haven't contracted that. But at the time they first started, they were independent power producer, and they produced power and sold it to Niagara under the laws under effective at that time, at six cents a kilo. Well, Niagara couldn't resell it at six cents, they were selling it at two or three, so they were losing all of these independent power producers. So as part of the power choice and all the changes that happened there, is Niagara bought out that contract from Kogen, at which time they stopped producing power. They only produce it now during peak requirement periods where they can sell it for a handsome profit. That has adversely affected our water revenue for how many years ago?
Since '08.
To the tune of about three-hundred thousand dollars a year loss.
And I said, you can make your own power for five and a half cents, and you're going to pay them six? And he said, well, there are times when we need that extra power, and we're willing to pay the six cents. So I do not square one with that.
Not always. So now, they have been, that contract has been bought out, so they don't produce power very often at all. They have the capability, but they don't do it. When they are producing power, they are a tremendous water use customer.
Now, today they don't care what they have.
Yeah, and as I said, about four-hundred thousand dollars a year at the rate that we were charging them. So that has been adverse effect to our water revenue. And now with Nestle's being another large customer, that won't be using it after May or until when they get closed up, unless we can find some other industry to go in there. And we're trying to do that, but there's no guarantees at this point in time. The revenue just will not be there to pay the bills. That's what the situation is. Roger, when was the last time that we had to increase water rates?
For the average Nestle customers, they were capable of making a lot of money. They've done pretty well. Now, the loss of too many stuff.
That doubles the cost of the water more than that.
I think the basic question that the council has to ask themselves is, how do we possibly make up the difference in the loss of revenue from two of our biggest revenue with the producers? We have to make up, as the graph showed, four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars. So I guess I ask Mark and Roger, what options do we have?
We can increase rates, we can look at personnel. If we are to operate our water department in the efficient manner that we would like to be operated in, and I think we need to look at that also, but it'd be a lot of people at four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars, so. But certainly, the council continues to look at every aspect that we can think of, and at this time, I think we're looking at, unfortunately, passing on this rate increase, that we really are reluctant to do, but once again, we have to take a positive action and take that approach.
This presentation today, are we going to vote on it today, or is this just the presentation?
This part of it is a presentation.
Good job. Are you going to let people know what you're actually, are you going to vote on it?
There is, there is an item on the, the next item on the agenda, is a vote on this.
It would be nice if people would know about this, because I think this is the only thing that hasn't been raised so far, right? Sewerage has just raised, or not sewerage, garbage pickup was just raised, but it would be nice if the people could vote on this. I'm just telling you.
How would you propose to the lawyers, if you can raise the funds?
Well, I can tell you how. I can handle it. Number one is, do we have more people than we need on the water, Martha, sir? Maybe the wage is too high, I'm just asking the question. The thing of it is that everybody's getting laid off, and everybody, and the million-something gallons, I handled this budget out of Nestle's. And it's a little difficult, because I always tried to tell the city that they weren't getting enough money. And I talked to a gentleman, I won't mention who it is, I tried to convince him, but meters, I understand meters, but when I left there in ninety-six, we were using forty-two million gallons of water a year in Nestle's. That's what it was when I left there. When I started out years ago, I think it was a hundred and seventy-eight million gallons, and I had charged that right at the third. So if they're using a million-something now, I'm amazed. There's not a million, but a hundred million, I'm amazed.
Any other questions of Mark?
Mark, in your, using your resource, American Water Works Association?
Yes.
Can you tell us, is there any other municipalities that have used this formula of demand versus usage?
I do know for a fact, the city of Augsburg has a two-part system, as does, it's come to our attention, that the city of Watertown also uses a similar two-part rate, essentially consisting of a base rate and then a usage rate. As far as, and again, these are within the eight peer cities. There are additional cities elsewhere that do, but they generally reflect much larger utilities. But those are the two that I'm aware of locally in that peer group. As I mentioned before, the other ones have single flat rates, but they're generally much higher, you know, in the order of over two dollars, well over two dollars per thousand gallons. And as I mentioned, a single high rate, I think I did the, a quick look, would be, based on the projected water sales after Nestle's closed and the revenue requirements, would be three dollars per thousand gallons. The real downside there is that really precludes you, or is a real disadvantage to the city when you're trying to attract a large industrial user that uses a lot of water, they might see, seeing that rate is really deterrent to them, whereas if they see a rate of a dollar eighty-one per thousand gallons, plus a nominal, really, for a larger user, demand charge, you know, whether even if up to several thousand dollars a year, is much more attractive to them in the long run. It really would help the city in terms of attracting a user. At the same time, it's fair and equitable. Again, the fixed costs are recovered by the demand charge, which you can think of as a base charge, and then the usage charge recovers the variable cost based on how much water is actually supplied to that customer.
Well, of the two you've mentioned, Augsburg is the only one on this spreadsheet.
That's correct.
You all got table five-five?
I don't know if they have that or not.
We didn't pass that out. That is in the water rate study.
They don't have the graph. The graph shows of the eight municipalities or cities that Mark looked at, the average ranges any from a low of two-twenty-two to a high of two-ninety-one. And the next one is, the next lowest one is two-thirty. So we're lower than six of the sample cities.
And that's based on seventy thousand gallons per year, correct?
Did the press then get this either?
No.
Is there, you got an additional copy to Roger?
I don't have a copy of that one with me, but I can get a copy to Roger, no problem.
Could we go make a couple copies for the press? I think it's important that everybody knows what, how we relate to the eight key cities that we've compared ourselves to, more particularly, the city of Augsburg, who's in this same system.
That's correct.
And their population is most closely equated to ours, and based on the average usage, what their charge is. I'd like for the public to know that.
Does the city of Augsburg use meters?
Do they meterize?
Yes, they do. They use meters.
Mark, would you say that there is a tendency for, when cities are looking at their water rates, do you think they're looking at now demand and usage both? Or they're using, they're using that as a benchmark, if they're going to change their rates, they're looking at demand and usage?
I believe so, particularly when you get into situations like where you have a user that's highly variable, that may use a tremendous amount of water over short periods of time, and then be inactive. And most importantly, it is in accordance with AWWA's recommendations. And that's really, as I mentioned before, they're the, you know, really the guiding agency for public water systems, and they're generally contributed to by nationwide by water, public water system experts, engineers, as well as planners, and the others, professionals associated with the industry.
Both places have, I was going to say, both of them have water, does it matter if the access of water is or not?
I can't answer that immediately, with what they have exactly. Some places use surface wells. Typically, you find with smaller systems for, like the city of Fulton, it's typically well-based. Most smaller municipalities don't use surface water supplies, typically because the cost of treating surface water supplies are, is generally higher, because it's less well-protected than groundwater. Now, certainly, the city of Syracuse is an exception, as we all know, the city of Syracuse uses predominantly skinny Alice Lake water, with additional water from Inandoga Lake. But, and that's also in part reflective of the much, of a little bit lower rates that the city of Syracuse sees. On the same side, the city of Syracuse is a much larger system, too, and a larger system allows it to spread costs a little, little further.
I know they were dying for water, did anybody try to just tell them water, or is that a down situation?
We know that they're going after their own water district. Why it is they don't want to, I haven't had that discussion.
They said they were interested in water this week. I was talking to people.
No doubt, that's something we ought to pursue.
That might help our situation, right? With Nestle's.
Absolutely.
My understanding is that the mayor has talked to Valney, you know, over the years, and they have not necessarily been interested in, I think Rod, maybe Roger, when he comes back, and America can answer that question better. I mean, we'd love to supply them with water. Because the water, they create a water district, it's very expensive. I think. Mayor, while you were out, the question was whether we had talked to Valney before about supplying them with water.
Oh, most certainly. We've made the offer to, we have declined our.
Daryl, you want to reiterate what you said to the mayor?
Well, I asked if there was any effort to get Valney involved, sell that water, because it might help our situation in the city of Fulton.
Definitely, we, as I said, we have, before they went with this water district, which you're talking about, which they would have to form anyways, we were in negotiations with them, and they didn't want to, decided not to do business with the city of Fulton.
Was the situation there that we also were going to supply the sewerage and the water?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
It was two separate things.
Maybe you better talk to them, because my understanding was, we talked to them this week, that the water deal also, we had to supply sewerage. I'm just saying, it would be bad for you to follow and talk to them, because that's the understanding I got, okay?
Daryl, you're saying they're thinking if there was not only the water, they had to do the sewer? And you just heard that this week? Did the press not do that?
We're glad you checked out.
Thanks, Roger. Are there any more questions?
Going back to what Mark said, if you look at those eight municipalities, Augsburg being apparently the only one that's under this dual charge, if you will, the most closely associated with our population, their total rate is two-hundred-and-seventy-four sixty.
Are their demand charges higher, from what I understand? Hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes, as per their website for their water fund for the year two thousand and three, they have a flat water rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per year, and a metered water rate of a dollar eighty-five per thousand gallons.
And of course, if we were so fortunate to have someone come in and take over the Nestle plant, or some other major industry come in, this would all change.
Certainly, as I, I think.
The metric could change.
Oh, yes.
It's important to note, you know, as we noted when we started, that Nestle's accounts for right now about fifteen percent of the water sales of the water department. So that's fifteen percent of lost revenues of water sales with the pending closure of the facility.
Eighty-four million gallons.
Excuse me?
Eighty-four million gallons.
Yes.
So if we, if we found an industry to go into the Nestle site and use the same or... So if we if we found an industry to go into the Nestle site and use the same or about the same water usage as Nestle's, then this could be reduced by about fifteen percent?
That's correct, ten to fifteen percent. The demand charge wouldn't be exact, it would be close, because Nestle's, under the current proposed program, it's important to note that Nestle's will continue to pay their demand charge as a minimum charge, representing their fair share of the system capacity, so that relative to whether the facility must be turned out immediately, and also including their fire protection charges. And similar to what we discussed before, if Nestle's, under the current water rate schedule, Nestle's after closure, provided they weren't using any water, would only pay thirty-three dollars and eighty cents per meter, which is.
Under the present situation?
Yes, under the present situation, which is disproportionately low to the city's cost providing even fire service to that facility.
For twelve years, we didn't adjust our rates at all because revenues were there and it and it covered all the expenses. As as Mark mentioned, it's a cash versus basis that the revenues that come in, then that's what the water rates are set at, but now the the two two big losses of revenue are just going to impact our community much more than we'd like it to.
Any other questions?
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Roger.
Is there a motion to accept the water study?
Uh, mayor, I have a couple of questions, but they're not for Mark. They're actually for Dave Hawthorne and how this applies to our lawsuit. So because of that, I don't really want to hypothesize out loud. So I would offer a resolution to table this until I can talk to him. He'll be back.
I'll second that motion.
If that's all right with, we're going to find out through votes, but.
Table till next meeting?
Table till next meeting.
Table till whenever. I want to talk to Dave though.
Okay.
So I just wasted everybody's time.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
The next item is the approval of the water rate study. Are there any questions?
Oh, absolutely. I'll table this one too. Motion to table.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved in minutes of council meetings of February twentieth, February twenty-eighth, and March fourth, two thousand and three, are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved in minutes of council meetings of February twentieth, February twenty-eighth, and March fourth, two thousand and three, are hereby approved.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved, the city clerk should be authorized and directed by the common council of City Fulton, New York, to publish an invitation to bid in the Fulton Patriot for the canal landing, parking renovations project. Said invitation to bid to be published on Saturday, March twenty-second, two thousand and three, and Saturday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and three. Be it further resolved that the clerk, in accordance with said bid invitation to bid, shall accept sealed bids for said project in the city clerk's office located in the municipal building at one forty-one South First Street, Fulton, New York, on or before Friday, April eighteenth, two thousand and three, up to two P M. Be publicly opened that same day at two fifteen P M. in the council chambers located on the second floor of the municipal building. Said specifications of this project may be obtained in the Fulton Engineering Department located on the first floor of the Fulton Municipal Building. Be it further resolved, the common council reserves the right to reject any and all bids if in their opinion they are not in the best interests of the city of Fulton, or if they deem them to be too high.
I'll move that one too.
Is there a second? Mayor?
I wonder if the mayor would explain just briefly this project? I think it's a, I think it'll be a very progressive and something we can look forward to.
Yeah, we announced last fall that we were going to renovate the parking lot that is off four eighty-one, behind the former Woolworth Building. It's going to be a major renovation, it's going to change traffic flow in the parking lot, it's going to add some parking spaces, and it's going to add green space to the area. And when we made the announcement, Senator Wright, at that point, was able to locate funding to help us in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to offset the cost of this project. So we have finally got the plans together, and now we're going to go to bid, and hopefully the bids will come in and one we can award, and the project will be done probably in the May, June, July timeframe. It's going to take sixty to ninety days to get the job done. And it's going to just about finish the downtown project, Joe Martin, where we already know. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved in the meeting the council held on March fourth, the city clerk was directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of March eighteenth, relative to a right-of-way proposal submitted by Deborah Smith for a property located at ten North Fourth Street, Fulton, New York, the purpose of establishing a second driveway for tenant parking at said location. Mayor Stafford will declare this public hearing open.
Is Deborah Smith here? Would you please go forward and just brief us as to what you're looking for? Use the mic, please.
Family house, they're solely in one driveway, and it does present problems, especially in the winter, for one driveway is only wide enough for one vehicle, and in the winter, that vehicle has to be parked actually forward of the home. There's not a lot of room to move there.
This this item was brought before the Fulton Planning Commission, and they are recommending approval for a second driveway with the following stipulation: that the curb cut required for the second driveway be approved and overseen by the city DPW commissioner and meet the requirements specified in city code. Cost incurred for curb cuts will be at the owner's expense. Does anyone in the council have any questions of?
No.
No.
No. I'll move it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak on this issue? I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
City clerk?
Be resolved that right-of-way request submitted by Deborah Smith for establishing a second driveway for tenant parking at her property located at ten North Fourth Street is hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement between the city of Fulton and Digital Topath to provide webpage development and maintenance for the city of Fulton at a cost of forty-five dollars per month.
Motion? All in. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
With the management, the mayor, actually, forty-five dollars a month, or like twenty-five, or twenty-four, eight, twenty-five, the host fee?
Yes.
Now.
This will incorporate the host fee in it.
Yes.
Yes, it is, from what I have seen.
We have a. We have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion's carried. Next item.
See.
Presentation of the Comprehensive Plan.
Is that mic on? Push the button forward here.
One time.
Okay. I'm here this evening representing the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and we're here to present the final draft of the plan to the common council for their consideration. As you'll recall, the committee itself held a public hearing, which was followed by a thirty-day comment period. Prior to the comment period, we sent through the secret process to a number of interested parties, including DEC, HUD, DOT, county planning, the towns of Valney and Granby. And this plan represents a number of comments that came in, the review of those comments by the committee, and a unanimous resolution following those changes that were incorporated into this plan, to send the finalized draft on to this body for your action now. I think you've already received a copy. The changes are with the red tabs. County planning had made a number of changes. They were pleased with a number of things in the plan, but they did have some changes. DOT made some changes as well. So what we're asking you to do as a body is to set a date for a public hearing. This plan is now, along with you having your, along with you having the plan, it's already on display in the city clerk's office and in the library, so.
And I have copies.
About this entire period while it's being advertised, and get that opportunity to get additional ads.
And what we need to do tonight is to set a date for the public hearing. Would someone make a motion to set the date for the public hearing for April fifteenth?
I'll I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. The rest of the, the rest of the work will be done upon completion of the public hearing.
Yes, and there's a number of things that we have to do following public hearing, as a county council, obviously. This committee has put a lot of time into this plan, as you know, as you certainly know. There's several members here tonight who I'd like to recognize, Andy Weston, Sol Elgin, DePaj, Betsy Shumans, under charge. It was a, it was a good process, and I think a lot of thought was put into the plan itself. And I think if we can, it will be a blueprint for the city to follow if we, if the council decides to go ahead and authorize. And the changes that were recommended are, DOT, I think, were standard kinds of changes that they would have recommended under any circumstances, and county planning felt that some things might be subject to challenge, perhaps, if if we didn't change them. So as I say, you folks have your your copies. If you have any questions in the interim, you know, give us a call, give any one of the members of the committee a call, and we hope to see you at the public hearing.
Carol, I'm still looking for something that I know I saw, and it's not in this book. So the only other place I could think, did you give me a copy of the slideshow presentation that the Saratoga guy had?
If I can get one, yeah. Harley, what do you, you're looking for that one map?
I'm looking for a zone change that is not in this book.
Yeah.
And I know I saw it. I know I saw it.
Yeah, no, we talked about that.
I've got all the copies of the different.
The maps.
Do you have the spiel that he put on when he came here a couple months ago?
The PowerPoint? I'll I'll call him and see if we can get a copy of that.
Thank you.
Because I am still concerned.
That'll give us a month to do a research.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to thank you and all the rest of the members of the committee that worked on this for well over two years now. The number of hours that were put into this has just been tremendous. Everybody's dedication, I applaud. Not many walked away. I mean, we lost a couple members during the, during the time commitments, during the time of work on this, but there were just tremendous number of hours that went into the preparation of this. I appreciate so much everybody's volunteer effort to do this.
Well, even before adoption, it's interesting, we were in Albany today talking to the folks from the governor's office for small cities. As you know, we'll be applying for funding on, by April eleventh, and we talked about a number of things that we were trying to do and how the city has, doesn't have it finalized. Obviously, we haven't adopted. We do have a comprehensive plan, and they were very pleased to see we committed a comprehensive plan. If we then tie all of our activities into the plan, I think it's going to be a real cost for us in the coming years. Probably not just for six months. I don't think we would be looking for sponsorship funds and other things, but this should lend itself. Thank you.
Can I ask another question? Sorry. Carol, before you sit down, on the map that has proposed zoning changes, and it says a little light blue outline of the proposed rezone areas, my map doesn't have any little light blue areas. I've got my contacts in, so I should be able to see this. This is section currently six, map after page thirteen. So it's not just me. Six thirteen.
Yeah, so.
Six fourteen.
Right.
Well, I have a check in person, um, and the Saratoga associates, and if we, there's only three guys that will get copies out, you know, if your documents are coming in, like, everyone's around the school as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, discussion is discussion of retaining a law firm to represent the city contract negotiations with the three units. We, we interviewed representatives from five law firms over a two-evening period, and found them all to be definitely very good. They all got experience, and all bring some little difference to the table. Probably, you know, could do a good job for us, but some impressed us more than others. And John, I know you weren't able to attend those, but you missed a very good presentation. I know you're doing, I know. From the council, what?
I spoke with four of the five, and the one that I liked best was Melvin and Melvin. But I do also understand that you're mayor, you are the one that has to deal with these people much more closely than we do. So I will offer my opinion, but it's not necessarily that strong of an urging, for lack of a better phrase. If you have somebody that you like, please, I would defer to you. Absent your preference, I would suggest John Falch at Melvin and Melvin.
I would like to offer my opinion. I thought all the law firms were excellent. I think this gives us a real opportunity to extend our negotiation procedures to the fullest extent of the capabilities. I was one of the people that, there was three of us that interviewed the different law firms. I liked Romer, Collins, and Yo. One, they had a retainer, which I think it. Um, one, um, they had a retainer, which, uh, I think at this time that we need some, a law firm that's going to, um, be able to be contacted with other questions that we might have. Our city attorney has done an excellent job for a number of years, but sometimes, uh, he gets, uh, overwhelmed with the work that he has to do, and I think we, we need a law firm that's going to be able to negotiate and also to be contacted for other questions that might come up. Uh, two, Romer presently represents the city of Oswego and the county of Oswego. I think it has a certain advantage to that. I think that, uh, we can get some continuity between the three areas. Um, I like the idea that, uh, Romer was our representative a few years ago, so they know the city, they know, um, some of the inner workings of the city. I think that's an advantage. And three, I was impressed by the fact that, um, to use a phrase, working out of the box, whatever, I think that they gave us an example of, uh, they're going to be looking at, um, some new things that we think are going to be very effective in our city if we can, um, have that happen. So, um, I think they'll be innovative, I think they'll be, uh, looking for new ways of, uh, of helping the city out. So my recommendation is Romer.
Can I comment on that, Bob?
Yep.
To, uh, quote somebody who sat in this chair before me, uh, I believe, uh, the distinguished alderwoman Kathy Trowbridge, wasn't she the one who said, "If you always do what you always did, you always get what you always got"? And the, the one thing that stuck out with Romer Wallens and Minow was the fact that they have provided the service to the city in the past. I know that, to a man, after this budget, everybody spoke of the need to do something with the contracts that we have and there are concessions that we need to get from bargaining units that we deal with. If this law firm has negotiated on our behalf and we're not happy with the contracts that we have, why would we want to bring them back?
These were, this was a few years ago, too.
I understand that.
And I'm not sure the...
A few years ago, i.e. during Don Buller's administration.
Don Buller's administration, right. I, as you know, negotiates is very difficult. Um, we went to arbitration, uh, during that time, we lost. Um, I, I just more comfortable, I think, and of course, I, I liked, I liked, um, John Falge also, I thought he was, uh, he was excellent. Uh, I still think that Romer would, would be our, and I use, would be in our best interest.
When we, when we, I don't want to use the word "we", when I got here, January first, nineteen ninety-eight, uh, at the time, Romer Wallens was still on the books. Is that correct?
Hmm, yeah, last year maybe.
And how many of our unions had a contract? The fire department didn't, and that's one of the ones that we need to go after. Uh, I think the police department had a one-year, didn't they?
They, they had a one or two-year agreement.
And what about CSEA?
CSEA did not.
They did not. So two of our three con, two of our three unions were working without a contract while we had these lawyers or this firm in our employ. And I don't know if this is something that we as a council want to drag on for a year or two years or three years or four years and not have resolution, or if it's something that we want to grab by the horns and just get it done and, you know, let the chips fall where they may. Uh, again, this is all my opinion, so take it for what it's worth. It depends on who you ask, it's not worth that much. But, and you laugh because you're one of them. The, uh... That's my opinion. If, if I had a lawyer in the past and things didn't work out the way I liked, I'd go hire a new lawyer. I wouldn't go back to the same folks that I didn't like to begin with or at least didn't accomplish the goal that we had before. So, but that's just the way I am.
And I, well, I think that's one point, too, but I think there's two or three other points that are just as, uh, just as important.
That's fine.
But that's, you know, we have a difference of opinion.
I guess that's my opinion.
Sure.
And I'll still buy your beer.
Alcibiades Cavallaro? Your pigeon?
I don't have a picture of him. What you're saying, you've got the board, kind of dragged towards everything.
Two and seven, I don't have a ninety-eight other than I was told before to, uh, continue to hire a law firm, so the mayor should, uh, that might be directed, um, at what he got to do. In this, I have to say, totally agree. Number one, de- de-focused with a, uh, a low support device. About putting out, they, they are retaining about Oswego, have that some here as well as county. More importantly, without developing, have something confidential as regards to one of their charges by Oswego. They're looking into the banner that we have discussed here locally, that could be a potential new competitive source. Romer Wallens was my first choice based on previous experience for them. Their routine of fee increases, lower than anybody else's quota, and then finally not a big, uh, I called first year in office and for this year, not a, not a, so the law firms are higher, even though they may have a low power rate, but they significantly value that by five minutes on calls here than there's one call there, since two thousand thousand dollars. They're willing to do the job for, as I believe, in the beginning, a lot of final, so they're twenty-two hundred, twenty-three million dollars a month without being charged for next phone calls, uh, nailing, packing, whatever it's that. I think that needs to happen. The city of Oswego, the payment for all of their, uh, towns.
And that makes him a great lawyer.
I didn't say great, I think they have something up. Melvin and Melvin are my second choice. As the mayor said, they're five quality law, no doubt, and Melvin Melvin is a contract choice, but based on fee structure, based on they're getting a little bit more, but a heads up on what transpired in this city prior to what they now are negotiating in the city of Oswego, and the added cost of that, hopefully, not too confidential, they are suggesting might be, uh, more.
Well, I have worked with Romer Wallens, they were representing the city for a period back when I was, uh, chief of police, and, uh, I have worked with them on preparing contracts on the city's behalf. They're extremely competent, I understand that. I've known John Falge for a number of years, going back to the time that, uh, we were both in the Central New York Association Chiefs of Police, and the part that I liked the best of his presentation and his experience was negotiating the last, uh, contracts with Syracuse Police Department, uh, for the city, with Syracuse PBA and the Fire Department. Uh, and, and those are the two contracts that have, definitely have some language in here that, uh, we need to get changed to, uh, to save the city some money. Uh, I think that his experience dealing with, uh, those two departments in the city of Syracuse would, uh, really work in our favor. I mean, I think he would be more accessible than, than Romer Wallens with them being in Albany. I don't know exactly where Alderman Woodward stands on this. He, he was one of the, uh, the aldermen that sat in on the, uh, interviews, so...
Well, we have a meeting next Tuesday, I believe, with, uh, Commissioner Graham.
Graham, yes.
If you want to postpone it with the hopes that, uh, we have a majority...
Hopefully, uh, Woodward would be there at that time. The only reason, uh, he didn't make it tonight is he got called back into work. They had, uh, something happen and he got called back in.
Maybe in that, that timeframe, uh, John, uh, you might, I don't know if you received all this material.
I think Joe got it.
If we had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, Joe got it.
If you, if you need any, uh, more information, whatever. But Carly indicated, yes, mayor, you, you are going to be the one that's probably in the forefront, uh, with regard to negotiations, but ultimately, the council has the vote in that. Well, in all due respect, your position, I think the council has a very important role in that.
Most certainly. You're going to be the ones that vote on any contract, any tentative contract, so by all means.
So the council would like to retain the postponement of the twenty-fifth, if you'd uh, do it then.
I would recommend that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried.
Before we go into another item, a proposal at the last meeting for, that is, the Advisory Committee that was, uh, recommended in the first meeting of the new year, at which time I proposed a suggestion to the council. The council, uh, consensus of the council was yes to, to inform and such. Um, but to date, we haven't gotten any further. We have actually implemented the advisory committee. I call each of the councilmen individually to elaborate a little bit more on the notion of what this advisory committee can do. I think it's pretty obvious that without the executive assistant to the mayor to help you in a lot of these matters and the rest of us being partakers, any help we can get, I think will be beneficial, and that's why I recommend it. I also recommend that four individuals as starters on this advisory committee with specific reasons. John Crook and Joey L., both of whom have been the only executive assistants of mayor to date. I think they would offer a great deal of, uh, experience and expertise to the committee by virtue of their involvement with the budget as well as the overall municipal affairs and things like that. The other two individuals, Doug Caster, who is a major, uh, business person in town, have been on one or two other committees, a very brilliant person, I think has a great deal of offer. And two, McKendick, who has been on the place of fire commission, on the school board, uh, he has a great deal of experience in industrial labor relations, uh, his career in wrestling. So for the purpose of giving this advisory committee a heads up if you want, so that whoever else we bring forward isn't operating without some background of experience, that is why I'm suggesting these four people. And I mentioned these four people at each pre-alternative in the conversations, and I do believe that the advisory committee would be very beneficial to assisting this council over the next several months before we get to budgeting. The folks that they may be able to add some good information as to where we might seek to cut costs or raise revenue. I myself, when I ran for office, uh, this time around, told many people, one of us came in, that I'm one person, I can't do it all, and it's part-time. And I think it's essential that we can find people, and by the way, I've checked the three of the four are willing to do this, we can find people with brainpower and expertise to assist this council in finding a way to make some significant difference in this community. I think it's absolutely essential.
When you brought up the idea of the advisory committee, did you have a, a number of committee members in mind?
Seven of them. I think is an ideal number, uh, for a group. Now, that's not to say, once this committee is formulated, if they choose why to increase their number, I see this committee as an independent group. They pick their own chairperson, the council is out of it, the mayor is out of it, they determine how they want to structure themselves. We can give them a charge that we want them to look at, but I feel that they should be fully independent in a bipartisan group. We are in a very serious situation in this community as well as in throughout their estate, and I don't think we should look at this in terms of a political scenario. I'm looking at people who could bring something valuable in terms of suggestions or recommendations to this council. That's all I know. Curious enough?
Well, I think what we should do is, is, uh, come up with some more names and make sure that they would be willing to serve on it and try to do it, uh, all at once, be it seven or nine, you know, I don't dislike...
Totally agree, and I think it should be a consensus of the council, that one of the council members, the two of them, I think, asked, is this going to make an appointment by board? And I said, not necessarily. I don't know if that's the best way to do it either. My, my point is, the council should, the council wants consensus, a three in time, the independent committee on the committee, and once, once that's established, give them a free DM to do what they should and report back to the council.
Now, the criteria for membership would be either a resident or a, uh, business owner?
We have, we have had, we have had non-residents on committee in this community before, but I don't know that that's necessarily a criteria. Doug Caster is not a resident of the city of Fulton, but certainly does business at some point.
Oh, certainly, yes.
Joey L. will soon not be a resident of the city of Fulton, he's building a home outside the city, but he has a great deal of experience with municipal affairs in the budget. So, I, I for one, don't feel that residency is necessarily a criteria. I'm looking for expertise. The council need this agreement, and that's what I'm...
I think we need to get this started. I think the conversation has gone on, on and on and on, so as quick as...
If we don't get started, then everyone gets there.
Right.
Well, I think, uh, the, the council should come up with...
Come up with some more names.
At least three other names and, and five other names and, uh, uh, yep, get, uh, get them started and get them looking at something.
Yep.
Recommendations aren't going to hurt.
I had submitted in writing to you, okay, before I...
Yes.
Right, he's, yeah, yeah.
So can we put that in the agenda for the next council meeting?
Okay. Okay. So, appointment of...
Names be submitted and discussed and appointments made and we just take that.
Okay. That'll be for the meeting of April 1st.
April 1st. We'll see if we can't find some fools. We'll see if we can't find some fools. April Fool's Day.
Any one in the audience have any questions before the...
I have a couple things. Parking on Seventh Street where Doctor, what's his name, is putting his office on the corner of Seventh and the Artorial, the cars are parked very close to Seventh Street. I cannot see, if I want to make a left turn, I get to the top of Seventh Street, you cannot see, the car, you have to put your nose into Broadway to see the cars coming from your lap. I think they should move that, no parking for at least two car lengths. Can you see cars there? Right now, it's all working cars are there and I don't even take them anymore.
My understanding is that the regulation is twenty feet.
Right, right, Mayor?
Twenty?
Unless they make a walk, they can't be moved.
Right now, there's no bank and the vehicles are working on the place. I forget not to take it because I've always gone up that street and I'm not going that anywhere anymore. The second thing is, I talked to Joe about this and I'd like to know a little deeper on it, the property of Nestle's, once they're gone, the parking lot is atrocious, all their parking lots. They have snowbanks right now about hmm, fifty, twenty feet high, and it's almost a hole with a little thing and it's full of dirt. And the parking lots themselves have been sanded over and over again for the ice. Is that all going to be cleared up by the time they get out of there?
I will break that to Nessa's attention here at meeting.
Because that snow is going to be still there, no, I guess, I think, because there's so much of it, I don't know how it's ever going to be done. But the dirt is going to be there after they're gone and also, will they be keeping up the land, knowing the property, not only the front yard, but backyard where I am, where the warehouse is, they've been mowing it, are they going to continue mowing it after they're shut down?
I will check with them.
And who can you pinpoint down to, if they're gone, we can get a hold on, we holler, "It's not done," because I want to make sure there's somebody you can get a hold of. I can call people right now, but when they're gone, who am I going to call? You?
So, Neil Gobles?
Mayor, just to give a heads up, a van had already asked a question of me, and I especially around water, and he seemed pretty certain that the parking lot would be cleaned up.
And the sidewalks.
And, and that the ground would be maintained, I forgot.
If I want it right, I don't want just a stormy weekend. I don't trust them.
Anyway, Brian, Brian told me he saw those three areas, we're going to be around, so if you want to be, for a discussion, Brad, so you know that he's going to be here, they will be there.
Well, on the same line as my sister just spoke, I think the city's too generous with the parking spots because Academy Street is very bad, there's a hairdressing place there, and you've got the free spot right down just a few feet from the Artorial, and I have to come up Academy Street to come on my street on Buffalo, and this winter, I've almost been hit head-on because when I'm coming off the highway, there's a car pulling out of the eye, that is, the vision, there's cars parked right down there and there's a car coming down the street. So, the one coming from here, the one down the street, and some of us has to give, but there's no room.
Okay, so you're looking to...
Coming from the Artorial.
...parking east of, east of forty-one on the roadside of the street.
Right, right.
There's a sign there that says, "No parking in the very corner." The problem is nobody pays attention to it, they park all the way down to the end.
But there is, even the one that's there that's legal is very close, the one that they've got the...
I don't see him, because I see one that's parked in the middle, never gets taken.
Well, that and there, it's very dangerous.
I'll see if we can get the traffic department to look and see if we can do a court legislation where we can move it.
Yeah, because it's very dangerous, and this winter, I know it's been an unusual winter, but even last year, I was kind of disgusted, and I mentioned it to Harley once, that it was, I didn't like the parking there, and two or three times when people have been coming down the street, somebody coming out of the vision place and the hairdresser, and none of us has room, and it's, the thing of it is, I can't get off the highway. My rear end is still out there and I can't get off the highway, and I don't like being in the highway.
That's not a good place to be.
Nope.
Two hundred and forty-one.
And if there's a car illegally parked there, why isn't he getting a ticket? Why are the policemen not taking, doing their job? That's the law, take care of it.
I have no comment.
Revenue for the city, if they do their ticketing and they pay.
That's right. If they're not seeing those violations, they need to check closely. Anything else? Any other counsel can be, this is for the...
Just please, Alderman Lake has returned to his rightful position on the side table. There's a little wall over here. Down, a little down, down. That's why he hauls them back, that. It's good to have him back and that life's going better and continued, good health.
This side. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Next, all in favor?
Aye.
This is true.